6:30, so I will call our question to order. And Karen, can we have you take a roll call, please?
Just a second.
Um, Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Hold on.
Councilmember Gerard, you're on mute. Could we have everybody go on mute until we are through roll call? Hearing some feedback. Actually, Karen, since we are just in a workshop session, do you just want to note, do you just want to note attendance for the record?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, welcome, everybody, to our workshop session this evening. We are in joint session between City Council and Parks, Lakes and Trails. Have an agenda, we have an agenda before you this evening. Um, and our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would welcome everybody to join us in the pledge. If you would like to shut off your camera before you stand, you can do so in the bottom left-hand tray of your Zoom. If you want to stop your video. And I believe Dan will display a flag here. Here we go. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
indivisible,
liberty and justice for all. We do have an open forum on the agenda for this evening. Karen or Dan, did we have anything submitted for open forum?
I did not receive anything.
And we do not. Okay. With that, we are going to move right into Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission presentation. I think Jamie, you are getting us kicked off here.
Yes, I will kick it off. So I'm going to share my screen here and then we'll get going. So. All right. All right. So I just want to start by saying thank you to Mayor and members of the City Council tonight for having us at a joint workshop. We're looking forward to your feedback and input and any guidance that you have as we kind of navigate through our agenda tonight. So, um, so thank you. Um, our agenda tonight, I'm going to, we're going to go over three different sections. Um, I will start talking about our 2020 year review. I'm going to focus on Castlewood Golf Course, a little recap on parks and our community events. Um, after that, I am going to, um, lead a conversation on our recreation facilities and the model that we've been operating under and some, some changes we've recently seen. Um, that will include Castlewood Golf Course, our Forest Lake Senior Center and our athletic facilities. And after that, um, our Chair of the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, Terry Steenblock, is going to walk City Council through, um, our 10-year plan and vision for Parks, Trails and Lakes. So before I get going, just to note, I will stop after each section of the agenda and we will do questions, comments, feedback on each section before we move forward to the next one. So just you guys know, kind of when to keep your questions, comments. And at any time, if you have anything, you know, I'm open to as we go. So with that being said, we are going to jump into a little recap of the year we've had here. Um, in Forest Lake for, um, parks and recreation. Um, it's kind of difficult to think back to the beginning of this year, but if you do, we started this year seeking out a new manager for our golf course. Um, and so in January of this year, we released an RFP and we did have a lot of challenges with that. But, um, um, we were, you know, in January, we didn't have any responses to an RFP. So that led us to February. Um, we were in a really tight schedule, um, but we were able to really look at, um, have some further conversations and we got Forsome Golf Management, um, to the table and talked with them about the details. And we're fortunate to negotiate a contract with them that we signed in March. So that was the first few months of this year was really, um, getting our golf course operations on new management company and really getting that on track. Um, with that being said, obviously then we were hit with COVID-19 pandemic just as we finished that process. So, um, in, in hindsight, that was helpful for us as we transitioned to a new golf course manager. It allowed a little extra time for us to, um, you know, get that transition set up so it could go smoothly and be a successful year. Um, there were some restrictions in place in March that golf courses could not be opened during, due to the pandemic. Um, but Forsome Golf did a great job getting set up and ready. So as soon as the restrictions were lifted, the golf course could be opened. And so we did open our course Saturday, April 18th. And I did note here, um, we will close on Saturday, October 31st. So it was a really great year. Um, COVID was a great thing for golf just because people could do it safely, socially distanced. Um, and so we had a really, you know, coupled with nice weather, we've had a really good year at the golf course. We were fortunate to retain some of the former, um, participants, but we also attracted new ones. So really happy with the work that Forsome Golf Management has done. Um, and a couple of other exciting things where we did receive special legislation from the state of Minnesota. So we do have a full onsite liquor license. This was delayed a little bit due to COVID, but we are excited to see that come through with the summer. And we are working on the new clubhouse design so we can better provide social distancing as we move into the spring for next year. So we're looking forward to wrapping up the year and talking to Forsome Golf next month and hopefully talk about a new contract with them. Um, moving on to just a little recap on parks in general. Um, it was definitely a different, a very different year for parks due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, it required the city to really adapt almost on a daily or weekly basis to figure out what we need to do to keep our parks safe and accessible to the community. So our initial response was we closed all the playgrounds as we had to learn more about what this COVID-19 meant and what we needed to do to keep things safe in the community, to follow guidelines and restrictions. Um, other than that, Parks, Trails and the Open Space remained open during the pandemic the whole time. So we made some modifications. We implemented safety rules, um, for the different facilities so that we could encourage the community to get out and use the facilities, but in a safe manner during the global pandemic. Um, and we really actually saw a significant increase in park use this year from April through October. Um, it was really an essential service to the community, a space where people could go, um, get outside to get some fresh air or some exercise or meet with their families. So, um, it was a really busy year for parks. And as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we noticed a lot of groups, um, at the beginning of summer, we're just looking for space outside to gather. So the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission did, um, waive rental fees for up to four hours. And really we saw that utilized a lot for just small groups of, um, friends wanting to play cards, drink coffee and just get together outside. So I think that was really helpful, um, just the way we could be there for the community to encourage that outdoor use of space. Um, aside from that, we continued with normal business, um, completing maintenance projects. And I did want to say thank you to Public Works and the Park Rangers. I think they did a great job keeping the park clean and safe and welcoming to the community. Um, and thought they did a really great job. So, um, and then just with recent support from council, we are in the process of purchasing equipment for Bay Park that we're excited about. Um, and lastly, just for the recap, um, community events, obviously due to the pandemic, um, a lot of restrictions in place around large community events. So we did cancel Arts in the Park. We were able to move forward with the farmer's market. It was every Tuesday, um, so we started July 7th and it went through September 25th. Um, you know, it was great to have this. We did relocate it just so we had more room to safely distance the vendors, allow for more of a controlled environment um, and keep things pretty safe for the community. So we, we started out really well. We had about 115 people on average per night, um, for the months of July and August. And then September was really slow. We did have some vendors that were no longer participating, um, for different reasons. And I think maybe just people got busy and with the anticipation of back to school and things. So September was really slow, but all in all, we had a good experience with that. A lot of new customers and shoppers every week. And then lastly, um, I feel like I need to change this to maybe scratch the fall out of this because it might just be winter with the weather that's coming. But we are talking actively about what activities we can do yet this year that can provide for some social distancing. Um, and we have talked about still doing the tree lighting ceremony in some way, shape or form. Um, but as you'll see, as we continue to move forward with the COVID-19 pandemic and just across the country, um, park and recreation has really had to get creative on offering events different, um, in different capacities, virtual, kind of a take and do on your own project or activity. So we are, um, going to continue to monitor everything as we continue the next couple of months here. Um, but we really are hopeful to bring something to the community to do. So with that, that ends the, the first item, just a little recap. So if you have any questions, comments, anybody from council or Parks Commission, I'm happy to talk, talk about that now before we move forward.
I have some thoughts on Castlewood, but I know you've got that coming up as part of your notes. So I'll hold until then. And, um, just overall, nice, nice job on the pivot on a very challenging year. I heard fantastic things about both Castlewood as well as the format for the farmer's market. Um, I do think there's a contingency that look forward to, um, the arts in the park component. Um, as we're able to bring that back. Um, and I had a number of residents ask about if the Fenway location could continue to be a location as a second location on an alternate day. I don't know if we have capacity to do multiple, um, farmer market locations. There was perhaps a different group that was a different residence group that was attracted to that second location. And, um, and they liked having that in their community and being able to walk to it. So, um, I, I think that, that location selection was good and, um, certainly people appreciated being able to have the option.
Any other comments? Um, I just will say, well, we will be talking about arts in the park and I'm hopeful that we can, um, be able to be back downtown next year. Assuming we don't go too backwards with the COVID pandemic. Um, but that is part of our conversation of how we can get arts in the park up and running again safely for next year. So. All right. With that, I will move on to recreation facilities. Um, so in the past, uh, over the past few, several years, um, a lot of our city-owned facilities have operated under, um, a model where we've had a management agreement in place with a different organization or third party. Um, so these facilities include again Castlewood Golf Course. So that's currently operated, this is year one with Forsome Golf Management. Um, they also operate courses in, in St. Paul. Uh, the Forest Lake Senior Center is currently operated by the Forest Lake Seniors, Inc. And the Fenway Athletic Complex is currently operated by the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association. So, um, under this model, it's with the agreement in place, the city really has not been involved, um, very much or has had little involvement with the operations of the facilities.
Amy, Jamie, if I could, could I just have a question?
Sure.
Um, on the athletic facility, on a number of the commission meetings, I had asked if everyone was on board and it seemed like they were, but on this statement, it says that everybody is, you know, pretty much a hundred percent. And I'm just wondering, um, with the meetings with them, if that is indeed true or if they still have some problems on, on wanting to schedule their events.
Yep, I'm going to jump into that on the next slide, the next two slides, and then we'll all go over that.
Okay.
The question, and I, I think I should cover, I will cover that, um, in these next couple of slides. Um, so just kind of going back, um, this way of operating poses some challenges. So we've saw with the golf course, you know, we had really short notice to find a new operator. We had, um, very limited reporting or some gaps in the reporting to really understand true utilization of the facility. Same with kind of the, the financial aspect to really know, you know, what the profitability of the course or, um, facility could be or should be. Um, so some challenges with that, with kind of having that approach with another party fully involved in the operations. So we've learned from that, um, you know, it's not a sustainable way. Um, most recently, we're also going to talk about the senior center. But again, you know, you have one group running it, um, but then as soon as something changes within that organization. So in this case, the retirement, you know, then, you know, it leaves the city in a position to try to figure out how things have been running on a short notice and to, um, find a new model for that. So, um, so we've evaluated all three of these models, um, all facilities. So we can continue to deliver high-quality recreational services in the community. So this has been, um, kind of as Karen mentioned, uh, the city staff and the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission have, you know, talked about this. And we've identified a new model for how we can, um, run these facilities in the future. Um, and we have talked with each organization, um, or group. Um, so I'll move to the next slide here. So. Um, talking about Castlewood Golf Course, um, I'm going to keep this one simple, just in the fact that we did discuss, we do want to discuss and negotiate a new contract with Forsome Golf Management. Um, once we review the financials for how this year went and based on our last report, we're, you know, pretty optimistic that it's going to be, um, a, you know, very good situation for the city. Um, so we'll wait for those final numbers to come in and then share that with, um, both council and Parks Commission. Um, but really I think the, a big difference with this is that we've worked really closely from myself, um, and Patrick and Dave Adams and Public Works. We've worked more in conjunction with Forsome Golf Management and had some collaboration on, um, some of the things, you know, whether it's Karen, she's been fantastic at getting our weekly emails out and helping promote the golf course and just those, all those little things that we've tried to do to really expand, um, on that and just more collaboration together. So we're going to hope to continue in that model. And for the sustainability piece, hopefully we can secure a longer-term contract or at least discuss that as an option.
Yeah, that, that was my, that was my question on this one. Um, I know we had to do a one-year contract, um, just by nature of all of the unknowns and the timing. Um, what is our, what's our request going into the conversation? Are we looking for a three-year contract or something? What, what is our requested term?
Yeah, we haven't talked a whole lot about the term, but you know, I know briefly, we've, you know, longer term, three to five years, I think. Um, obviously depending on the, what the contract terms and negotiations will look like. But I think from a sustain, sustainability point, it'd be nice to, um, identify or solidify a, a longer-term contract. So that'll be part of the conversation. Or a three-year term with option to renew beyond that.
Right. I would certainly, I would certainly support that. And then, um, if we do end up in a shorter-term contract, like a one-year, how's, um, information exchanged on recognizing it is COVID and businesses all over the place are challenging. What's predictable one month? It might just not even be COVID. It might be a 2020 thing. What's predictable one month is not necessarily the same the next month. So if something were to happen with that operator, do we have better visibility to, you know, um, mailing lists and, um, tournament play and, um, some of the leagues that if something went wrong, we were, we would be in a better position from a data standpoint. Um, and if, I, I can appreciate that this last contract maybe was, had to be done quickly and maybe didn't have all of those, um, elements in it. Negotiating that into the next contract, I think, um, would be helpful. Just again, if something were to have to transition, that we would be in a better position than we were previously.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I would say that I think we are, from a data standpoint, in a much better position, um, with very detailed information. And we can get it, you know, fairly quickly within the day, um, within the hour. So, um, but yes, making sure we look at all of those items. And I feel like we are better positioned with a, a better true understanding and picture of what, um, you know, capabilities of the course, especially as we continue to, um, hopefully expand and just, um, continue the momentum we have going.
Yeah, I think, I think just, uh, observationally, I think there were a lot of limitations this year with the, you know, the, um, well, with COVID first and foremost, but, you know, just entering into that contract so late in the season. I mean, oftentimes you are doing your recruiting for tournaments and things like that for the following year. You know, the year of operation. And I, I do believe that there were some conversations, um, you know, with different organizations about coming in and doing tournaments, uh, limitations just in, you know, not being able to share carts and having access to enough carts to run a tournament. I mean, just simple little logistical things like that, I think presented some additional challenges in terms of programming out there. And I would expect, um, you know, just having met Zach and, and his passion for, uh, well, not only the game of golf, but for Castlewood in general, I do believe they're really enjoying themselves there. And, um, I would expect that he would have a, probably a plan in place should everything come together contractually with him. So.
Jamie, are we just looking at, uh, Forsome Golf just extend their contract for three to five more years? Or are we going through the whole RFP process again?
At this time, I would, I think the conversation has been to start with Forsome Golf Management and see if there's interest in renewing a contract.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, it's the, the possibility of getting somebody else to run the golf course is probably very small based on our first effort. So we would like to, and they've done a great job. So I think it's in the city's best interest to continue to, continue the relationship with Forsome Golf.
I concur.
All right. So with that, I'll continue on, um, the Forest Lake Senior Center. Um, again, this has been operated under, uh, the Forest Lake Seniors, Inc. And with the recent retirement of the Senior Center Coordinator Sharon Lundquist, who's been in that position for, I believe it was 11 years. Um, she's been running the day-to-day operations, um, hired by the Forest Lake Seniors, Inc. So she has recently retired as of October 1st. So it's another situation where, you know, we're looking at what do we do and how do we, how do we, um, you know, fill that position and what does that look like? Um, so the ci, city is going to become more involved in the programming and operations. Um, this is going to kind of fall a little bit more under the city of Forest Lake, which is really what you see most commonly in other communities. The senior center and the operations do fall under the city. Um, so the conversation we've had, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission will really be responsible for recommendations on how, um, for the operation and the use of the facility with a lot of guidance from the Forest Lake Seniors, Inc. Um, they're going to turn into more of an advisory group. So really we're going to lean on them for what people like or do not like. Um, um, for example, you know, they love getting their newsletters. So we're going to try to continue that through the rest of this year. Um, so little shift there, but it's again, just to recap, it's going to, the Forest Lake Senior Center is going to run under the city. Um, will be more involved. And again, the, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission will kind of oversee that area of, um, work and bring recommendations to City Council. Um, and then lastly, athletic facilities. Um, we've formally have had a contract with the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association to manage our largest athletic complex over at Fenway. Um, and, um, that's worked well over the last few years, but we also are missing some gaps there. So we've met with them and we're going to look at more of a citywide facility policy so that we can have, um, all the scheduling on the calendar. Um, this provides more access to other user groups if it's run under the city so people can find it a little easier. And, um, similarly, the Fenway Advisory Committee is going to change to an Athletic Facilities Advisory Committee. So it's kind of more holistic across all citywide, all of our fields. Um, and again, this is what you more commonly see with other communities is they have a rental policy and a fee schedule. So, um, with this model, um, the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association would still, you know, get priority scheduling of the fields. They turn their schedule in and then from there, we just open that up to other user groups to kind of fill in the gaps with that. So, um, Karen had mentioned if that was, you know, um, if there were still questions about scheduling. Um, and this went out, we had, did meet with the Forest Lake Area Athletic Association and they were on board with this model. Um, understand to submit a schedule and, um, work with us like that. And I think, you know, Patrick was, you know, if Patrick has anything to add, but otherwise, um, you know, it was very receptive. And then the next step is really just developing a, a fee schedule. So what are, what's it going to cost to rent cooling camp field, shilling field, um, belts and our fields out at Fenway? So it's just a citywide model that I think will help streamline and create efficiencies.
Yeah, I think that's, um, I think they were on board. They, they listened very intently. They agreed that, um, we would go this way. One of the other changes that we're making, once we understand what the fee schedule is going to look like, uh, we're going to propose that the, any revenue collected by those fee schedules be put into a capital improvement plan for all of the fields. Uh, so we dedicate those field funds to maintenance of not only Fenway fields, but all the fields. So that we have, we can have some kind of a revenue stream that we can, we can make improvements when we need to.
Jamie, this is Kelly. I just have a quick question. I know tomorrow there, um, and I didn't get a chance to email you before this, but there, they have their, um, monthly meeting and it'll be held via Zoom. Are, are either you or Patrick going to be attending that meeting? Or I'm assuming that that'll be the first time that the group has heard.
Um, I, we do have a Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So we'd have to see what time their meeting, is their meeting after that?
Um, it's at seven.
Seven, okay. So Patrick and I, we can connect and see if one of us can jump on that meeting.
Okay. And. I, I plan to attend too. I just, um, with our move been off the grid a little bit. Um, but just want to make sure that, I, I imagine that there might be questions, kind of like Karen brought up. And I want to make sure that they're, they get the correct information.
That sounds good. Yeah, well, well, I, if it's after our meeting, I can jump on that and we can talk to them about that.
Um, Jamie, Jamie, a couple, a couple of questions for you.
Um, sure.
As you're, as you're considering how to structure fees for the, um, the athletic facilities and other facilities, um, senior center, whatever. How, how, how do you plan to balance the, kind of the taxpayer use, the local residents that pay taxes and kind of technically own these facilities with outside groups? How do you, is there, is there a model, you know, kind of model?
That's a good question. And we really haven't dug into, we've started looking at fees across at other communities. Um, we haven't really dug into the numbers here for Forest Lake yet. However, there is a pretty common model in other communities where they do have, one option is having a resident fee and a non-resident fee. Um, and people do that for that reason, so that your groups coming in from outside of the community might have to pay just a little bit more to use the, the fields. So that is certainly a model that's out that we can and will look at as we develop the fee structure.
Also, when you, when you construct one of these fee structures, you also can, then you give favoritism towards the community groups. So people who are in the community, they get first fatted a reservation or like, um, Jamie said, a lower rate. But that's another way the model may be constructed.
And, and then one question on the, on the senior center. I know there's kind of a combination of relief and anxiety with the senior board, um, over, over this decision. And I, I, I use the word anxiety loosely, just, you know, I mean, it's, it's changes hard sometimes. Um, and so, um, I know you're kind of talking about the Parks, Trails and Lakes being responsible for recommendations on operations and use and the senior center serving it as, as an advisory committee. And just my comment would be, um, I really hope that we can kind of work together really collaboratively with that group. Um, and I think you did mention that a little bit, but I just want to reinforce the importance of that. I think, um, they, you know, they have, they, they really do have a sense of ownership there. And at least initially, as we're kind of starting to maybe transition away from the current model, you know, um, just to be sure that we're, you know, we're not, you know, for lack of a better term, heavy-handed there, you know, in terms of, you know, dictating and mandating what kinds of things are going to occur in that space. So, um, and then is there any, is there any update on the 501(c)(3) issue with them?
Yeah, they, they, they have to, um, part of what we're doing is we're transitioning, uh, the bookkeep, accounting, payroll and all that to the city's finance department. Uh, they have to have a board meeting and have the, all those funds transferred. And then there has to be a decision whether that 501(c)(3) stays in place. And if it does, then who are the officers of that 501(c)(3) are going to be? Whether it's, you know, the, some of the members of the, the senior committee or whether it's some members of the city or a combination of both. So those are the details we have to work out still. Um, we're moving carefully, not fast, not slow, but carefully.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of, there's a little, it's getting a little more technical than we first thought as far as transferring funds and,
Right.
and taking over 501(c)(3), but also we understand, as you mentioned earlier, that there's some delicate ways we should be doing things and approaching this transition. And, and we still also have to figure out what the long-term look of the management and operation of this and how much the city does versus how much the board does and volunteers and things like that. So, uh, fortunately, uh, with, again, with COVID, the, the. So fortunately, with, again, with COVID, the, the, we're kind of been, not to say lucky, but lucky because of the reduced, the reduced programming. It allows us to get into this a little bit easier and not have to panic like we did with the golf course.
That's great. Thank you.
And Kathy, just for a little reassurance, the individuals I've worked with so far at the senior center, I've, you know, made it clear that I'm relying on them and depending on them to advise me on what I need to do. And I'm helping to facilitate the transition. And that really, you know, I've had a couple hours of rundown of the Forest Lake Senior Center. So I'm not an expert in it and they are. So I just, I am going to continue that conversation and make sure that they know that this is still their operation, that I'm just helping guide this process until we figure out, like Patrick said, the long-term plan. And we'll work together with them in conjunction, so.
And I know you will do a lovely job. You always do.
I will try my best.
Jamie, I just want to mention that the athletic facilities recommendations that you've got going here, I think are a good thing. I, you know, in years past, I mean, I know that there's been some issues with this will help a lot. And so the city actually knows what's going on. So I think you're on the right track.
Thank you. I think it'll help, you know, like I said, it's a citywide, solving the problem citywide. We don't have any scheduling software currently for any of our other fields and they're available first come, first served. But we've really had some nice improvements out at Cooling Camp and that's a nice little athletic complex in itself. So it's really helping develop a sustainable model and approach for all of our city facilities. So I think it's going to really make things more efficient and streamlined moving forward, so.
Jamie, I know this is on, I know this is on your mind. But just to reiterate, I think one of the keys for success for this transition with athletic facilities is going to be multiple levels of conversation. As you know, the FLA board, the FLA organization is incredibly complex. It's a large organization with parties. I know that there's been a meeting with leadership, but getting knowledge transferred from leadership to the executive board, to the full board, to down to the individual sports is going to take multiple rounds of conversation. So I would just keep engaging the, and just keep asking, who can we talk to? Who can we talk to? Because I think, you know, there's an organization-wide level concern, but then there's down to the tactical concerns of the individual sports. And I think we're going to have to be at the table for those, for that to be a successful transition. So I would just, I, I, I know this is already on mine, but we just need to be diligent and just kind of be there to answer the questions and partner with them in a, in a very expansive way. Because they're a large organization.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Mara, I couldn't have said it better myself. And that's the concern I have. They're a special group that have given many, many thousands of dollars and taken care of thousands of kids. And it isn't to say that this might not work. It's just going to be very, very delicate to make sure that none of us are, are at the top pounding anything down. That we're working together on this because I know it can work.
Yes, and, and those are good reminders as we continue to move forward. And, and that was the partying conversation we had was, what are the, the next thing we just need to know, what are the fees going to be? And, you know, so that's something that we've already expressed, we can work together on establishing that and making sure that they're fair and equitable. And really, we're just trying to put a system in place that's a little easier for everybody. And maybe, you know, it takes some of that burden off of them for having to manage the complex and all the details that go into that. So definitely, you know, partnership in this and seeking collaboration as we move forward and continue the communication as proactively as we can with the different groups within FLA, so.
I think council and your parks board is very, we are open to assisting with some of that communication. So help us, help us help you however we can.
Okay.
And, and I would build on, I would build on Mara's point. As you're considering the composition of that Athletic Facility Advisory Committee, this may be a great opportunity to kind of take a look at how that organization cascades down and engage maybe a member of each of those individual sports groups in some or part of this, you know, somewhere along the way. So I think that may assist in a smooth transition as well.
All right. That sounds good. I'm just going to finish one more slide here and then if there's any other further questions on recreation facilities. So don't need to touch on this too much, but there's just a lot of benefits, kind of as we talked about. Increase the public's opportunity to use the facilities. We'll be a little more involved for some more of that reporting and, you know, information that's helpful for the city to understand. Should we be in a situation again where we're needing to be, you know, involved more? Expanding opportunities. And as Patrick mentioned, and this is one of my key points that I wanted to touch on as well, is developing a revenue stream dedicated for future improvements in all of the facilities. So we're going to do that for all the different facilities we talked about tonight. And leveraging our resources to be efficient. And just, you know, allowing us to be proactive. And as the city continues to grow, we need to be ready for that. And so we can best utilize the facilities and have, be a service to the community. So with that, that is the end of this little section on our recreation facilities. Are there any other questions at this time?
I have just a tactical budget question that I should know the answer to. And I didn't, I didn't have a chance before this meeting to look at it. Are we on the status of the overall Fenway? The, the Fenway Fund, the, the inter-fund borrowing, is that paid off or?
Yes, it's paid off. At the end of last year, so we started this year without the debt of, that debt is paid off, so.
Hallelujah. All right.
Yeah. So we're going to start saving money.
Reinvesting money, right?
That's a good way to put it. I'm hearing no other questions. I'm going to turn it over to Teri Steenblock, the chair of our Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. And she's going to lead through the 10-year plan. So Teri, I'm going to let you share your screen.
All right.
All right. Hopefully you can all see that and hear me okay.
We can.
Awesome. All right. So I too want to echo Jamie's comments and just thank you all for being willing to spend time with us tonight. I know that your schedules are busy and we really appreciate having the opportunity to come forward and share with you where we're headed as far as it relates to our 10-year vision. We are going to be looking for your feedback tonight to, to help guide us and direct us in the right direction. So we appreciate any insight that you want to add tonight. I would also invite any of our teammates on the commission to speak up and interject at any time as well, as we go through the next few slides here. So first of all, I want to start just by talking a little bit about our mission and vision. And I'm not sure if you guys are like me or not, but I am a little bit of a park geek. And every time I see something related to the parks, trails or lakes, I take the opportunity to read it. And I can tell you that every study that I have seen and study after study after study shows a broad spectrum of benefits that are related to the parks, trails and lakes that we have available to us in this city. Not only do they help us build strong communities, but if they're appropriately invested in, they are a valuable asset to the community and help from an economic development standpoint as well. One of the key words that comes to mind when we think about making statements of health and wellness, economic development, inclusion, is the word quality. And quality is a term that you all used as well in the revised city plan that was published, where you identified high-quality and accessible parks as an overarching goal for the 2040 comprehensive plan. The Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission had a very lengthy conversation about quality and about our mission and vision. And so what you see on the screen in front of you is our updated mission and vision statement, which encompasses the word quality. And, and the reason why we wanted to make sure we included that is, again, we felt like it was the foundation for those important aspects that we listed in the first bullet point here. Not only do we want to offer the quality, but we want to be able to sustain it as well. So we've been working towards a 10-year plan that began last year with the solicitation for community input. And I want to just take a few minutes to walk you through where we've been and, and where we're headed. So we held open forums and invited members of the community to come in and share with us what their wants and needs were as it related to the parks, trails and lakes. We also recognize that not everybody is interested in coming into the building to provide that feedback. So one of the other things that we did was we utilized social media to gather additional input. So we looked at where the majority of the community traffic was occurring as it relates to social media. And we solicited feedback via the Nextdoor app, citywide, the City of Forest Lake Facebook page, and also the Forest Lake Happenings Facebook page. In addition, I would say that many of us also attended the strategic planning meetings that were hosted by the council. And during these sessions, we also heard feedback that was taken into consideration as we've been working to build the 10-year vision that we'll be presenting to you tonight. So in essence, we've taken our work into steps. First, we gathered community feedback. Then we looked at our mission and vision, which we just shared with you. And then we worked towards establishing categories for our work. And on August 12th, we met to identify the priorities that fall into the different categories that we identified that we'll be talking about tonight. So on this screen in front of you, you see the six categories that were identified and discussed by us. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide because we'll talk about each one of those six categories as we walk through the initiatives. The only thing I would note is that what you see here on this slide aligns with elements of strategic plans that are in place by parks and recreation departments across the country. There are also categories that were represented in the Minnesota statewide comprehensive outdoor recreational plan. And lastly, there are also some of these categories that are listed in the National Recreation and Parks Association Plan as well. So we'll go through all six of the categories and then the thought would be that we would turn it over for discussion and, and council input. And we can go back to any one of these slides at any time after we get through here the initial piece. So the first category was the repair, replace and renew of existing facilities. So just like other property and equipment the city owns, the parks, trails and lakes are an asset that do need to be maintained and renewed. Failure to consider them as part of a renewal and replacement strategy does create gaps that result in things such as some of the safety issues or lack of equality and inclusional opportunities. Just as our demographics as a city are continuously changing, our work here as part of the parks, trails and lakes needs to keep pace with those changes. So that's what we were considering as we took a look at this. I would say that for far too long, there has not been an investment in the parks, trails and lakes of this community. And we do have some catch-up work to do. And in addition to catching up, we need to make sure that we maintain and enhance what we have available as well. So we thought that by creating and documenting a life cycle replacement plan would help us get on track, keep us on track and allow us to move forward with something concrete that's transparent and available to everybody. We do want to revitalize one to two parks a year. And again, as a way for us to catch up on the lack of investments that have been made. But again, thinking about it as, you know, we can't just, we can't just maintain or update a park and then let it go for 20, 30 years. There has to be this cycle and that's the reason for the goal of revitalizing one to two parks a year. We also have parks and open spaces that we think provide opportunities for some creative solutions to try to close some of the gaps and allow us to provide a variety of amenities to the different members and demographics of our community. And we're not looking for this to just be a cookie cutter approach, but instead have some thoughtful evaluation of the parks and open spaces with the goal of adding value and incorporating the needs of our community and creating solutions that are inclusive for all. So I would say we're not just looking to buy a slide and a swing set and place it somewhere. We want to strategically evaluate these spaces and put things there that, that makes sense, not only short-term for the community, but sustain us long-term. Our second goal or category was the development of new parks and trails. And when we talk about our second initiative of development here in the, the trails, I often think of a psychiatrist from Columbia University. And I think she did a fantastic job of, of describing what trails are. And she said that we need to think of trails and pathways as the arteries in the circulatory system of a city. They're essential for creating a healthy city. And we've noted here that they help provide citywide connections and interaction are, and are of the utmost importance for the city to remain connected and healthy. As you all know, the trail system is complicated, it's extensive. It has many different tentacles that come into play within that trail system. And so we plan to have a workshop that is, or probably multiple workshops that are dedicated solely to recommend a trail development program, incorporating all of the trail specifics for the city. So we're looking to identify a multi-use trail that enables the connection of the parks and the neighboring communities. We also want to look at developing a looped trail system with an existing park. So when I think about that, I think about something similar to what Columbus Park has in, in their, their main park. We also want to take a look at technology and implement technology or other solutions that allows people to conveniently and quickly, quickly know where our trails are and how they can connect to them and where they end up when they connect to those trails. And then one thing I think that is missing as we look at the Hardwood Creek Trail that could potentially be a safety issue is appropriate lighting. And recognizing lighting is expensive, but maybe necessary safety factor for us to consider, we would like to explore some alternative energy sources that are available for lighting the trails. Outside of solar, there are some other alternative energy sources that are available that we would be wanting to take a look at there.
Teri, can we do feedback, can we do feedback on each of these or?
Yeah, sure. Whatever works for you.
Um, so this, so development of new parks, I know that, so we're in this, we're in this little bit of a, no surprise to the Parks, Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission, but we're in this pendulum, right, where how many years ago, we had this master park plan that was developed? And then we, we stopped work on that and we switched the pendulum over to a plan of, we are going to prioritize three premier parks within the city. And it seemed like that was the focus of our efforts. And what I'm seeing in our 10-year plan, which I really appreciate is a, is a break from that and a change from that and moving more into what I, I'm assuming what you mean in development of new parks is more of neighborhood parks rather than all of those resources going into Fenway, Lakeside and Belts Park. Is that?
You are correct. Yes.
So I support that, but I also recognize it's a change. And so is one of the items, I, I don't see it on here. But there's, there's a timing or, and maybe it's already starting to take place as new housing projects are taking place and how we use parkland dedication dollars. And if we are, if we are requesting land or if we are requesting dollars for that, is there a, a time when we make that switch? Is, how does, how does that kind of get built into this 10-year plan from a tactical standpoint? Because I, the, a big strategic item. And until we start using those resources differently, we're not going to have the resources to do what you want to do. So maybe that's a question Jamie, Patrick. When, when does that kind of switch best get flipped? And when do we start planning for those dollars differently?
I'll check to see if Jamie and Patrick want to answer, but I do want to throw in something from the commission. And I would say that every time we have the opportunity to evaluate whether we would take land versus the park dedication funds, the commission as a whole does have that conversation. I think it's going to be really important that the land that is offered up, if we're going to take that land, it needs to be quality land that allows us to make appropriate investments on it. So I think that's a fine line and it's a, it's a delicate place that I think we'll have to take a look at. So I, again, we'll open it up to Jamie or Patrick, but I just wanted to share that insight.
Well, you, you're absolutely correct. A lot of it, unfortunately, we haven't had to make those decisions lately, at least in the last couple of years, because we haven't had any newer developments. Hopefully those will still come. But it does depend on, on what the goals of the parks and But it does depend on, on what the goals of the Parks and Trails Commission are. But also it depends on where the current parks are located and where, where a plan should say, here's where we need one. So you know, my philosophy is you should always look at land first. And the reason you look at land first is because land doesn't regenerate. It doesn't come back once it's gone. So if you have massive subdivisions and, and, and building outline to outline and so forth, um, you won't have a park. And if you go 20 years or 15 years to go get one, it's going to cost you five, six times as much. So land doesn't come back. So uh, you do have to do it smartly and correctly and get good quality land. You know, you don't want to take somebody's wetland off their hands and follow it apart, right? So uh, it, it, it really just does matter on, on the condition of the parks, the location of the parks and and how much funds we have available otherwise than uh, impact fees.
Yeah, I think both Terry and Patrick covered it. Well, I think previously we, you know, it's always been looked at. Um, there's been more of a um, you know, in the past, you know, take the cash to get out, you know, we had the debt payment lingering. Um, but it will be something moving forward. We're going to continue to evaluate. And just the strategic part of it, there are future parks and trails uh, mapped out in the 2040 comp plan. So using that as a guide and really just analyzing each situation on a case by case scenario and make sure that aligns. Um, but you know, that I think that's, that's the steps moving forward is really look at that comp plan and predict where we need parks based on current placement of them to consider land or cash.
I would encourage us to sooner rather than later have put together some sort of policy or guidelines around what are the attributes that we look for in that land donation? Um, just so that we aren't in that case by case basis, looking at the least attractive parcel of property. Um, and really getting, you know, wetland after wetland to us as park space. Um, it's easy, I think it's easier for us to do that if we've got some sort of guidelines or policy before those opportunities come forward. Um, and I know that that's going to be a big part of making this strategy successful.
I think the other thing too, we do have to think about is uh, right now our, our parks is alive because of the dedication fees, park dedication fees. So if we decide we're going to take land, we're going to need a different funding source. And that's something that we'll have to think about long-term as well. So.
Uh, Terry, if I may say something, I agree. And I think it's something we've wrestled with all along, whether we've had the funding or not. Um, that we make sure that we look at the location and that we don't have too many parks within a certain amount of area. And when, then we have to talk about uh, maintenance on them. So a while back, we were considering not having so many smaller parks, which really require a lot of maintenance. But making sure that they're quality parks in areas that people can get to easily. Um, instead of putting one in every development, which is not a good plan either, to make sure that they're well-used and quality parks.
And, and to echo on, on the funding, um, we had for, for, for a very long time, we were paying off, uh, paying off the Fenway loan. So those dollars are going right back over there. Um, so we're, we're going to also be neat echoing that we're going to be needing money, funds for, for parks coming up, just, just not the new homes or apartments or anything that are beginning to be coming in like that.
Yeah. And, and just to comment a little bit on the funding, uh, it's a good thing that you have a, an impact fee or a park dedication fund fee. Uh, but that's a finite number. It's going to be a finite amount of money sooner or later. Sooner or later, you're going to be built out.
Yep.
You have to begin to think long-term, how are you going to fund parks and recre- parks and recreation programming and trails? You don't have that mechanism now. Again, that's just another, one of the other arrows in the quivers that we have to take a look at. But uh, sooner or later, your, your park dedication fees will run out and there, there'll be very, very little trickle, if any, because your development will be built. So I mean, we're talking maybe 20 years or 30 years or whatever, but you need to start getting other funding sources now.
And that's one of the things we will talk about in a couple of slides here ahead. So yeah. Any other questions on this one before we move to the next one?
Just a quick question to just make sure I'm up to date on the more immediate plans or on existing equipment. I know at one point there are redevelop, redevelopment of Bell's Park was pretty high on the agenda. Is that still the case or where, where is, what does that now fit within kind of your thoughts on the next couple of years and priorities?
It, it is still high on the agenda. Again, it's gonna take a financial review and, and a determination of how we uh, redevelop that park.
Yeah. And I'll chime in on that too. Um, we recent, so we went through the master plan and got everything ready to go. But an example on the, how important the funding aspect is, is that project if with, if we had no, if we had an open checkbook and all the money in the world and we did what we wanted to do, I mean, that's easily like a million dollar. You know, it's a very expensive project. Um, and so we've recently talked of how can we scale back a little bit? Or how can we do a phased approach? What are the priorities? What grants can we leverage to get some funding? So we can do some, some component of that. Um, so that conversation we, we had again recently and we're looking at how can we get that cost down? But just as an example, um, now this year that we've been out of debt with Fenway, our park dedication balance is around about $500,000, which is maybe one project and then you're back to a zero balance. So there's, um, you know, that's been the challenge for years. It's taken five years to get to that funding amount, $500,000 over five years. So you kind of have to pick one project and that doesn't even really complete a project, you know, um, with. So I think that just is an example of the challenge with the funding. So we can do a small fraction of the Belts Park project next year. And that's what we're hoping to try to strategize how we can leverage our dollars we have available with grant funding to look at at least getting the community building or facility um, built there. But again, just that is top of our list. Um, as we continue to work through this, this strategic plan and identify future revenue, revenue sources, how can we work on getting Belts Park accomplished soon?
Jamie, are, are you or is somebody keeping in touch with Rotary on progress and discussions? Um, because that's, you know, that's going on a couple of years now. You know, or will be year and a half since the funds were raised for.
Yes, I've talked to um, Ted Blank with the Rotary regarding the funding and he, he knows like the, the timeline that we're working with on that, that um, we don't have, we don't need the funding yet, but it's available whenever we need it. Um, and I hope to by the end of this year, like I said, we just had that conversation. We're trying to figure out where can we scale back on the cost of that project? And reprioritize if we have to do a phased approach, what would be the priority in that project? So we'll continue the conversations as we have more information. Um, and we're working through that here in the next month or two to see if we can move forward with one component of that.
Well, it, it came up in a small group conversation that I had. Um, uh, we, we do a hybrid model for Rotary meetings. Some of us are in Zoom and some of us are on site and um, it did come up, um, that there hadn't been an update for a while. So I just wanted to kind of check in with you on that to see if we're keeping in touch and.
Yeah, I haven't in a bit, but I'm happy to reach out to them and let them know. We're still working through planning on that.
Okay. Cause there is a new president now too. So Ted is no longer the.
Okay.
President. So. But I think it would be good to just give them a periodic update. Progress report or something.
Sure.
All right. I'm going to move on to technology, which was our third initiative. And as we note here, we are all digitally tethered to our devices. And many of our younger generations don't know anything different. So we want to be able to leverage technology in a positive manner to keep people moving and engaged in recreational and some of the administrative work that comes along with it. Um, there are programs that allow for the integration of self-service kayak canoe and bike sharing programs uh, where they're leveraging technology. We want to explore programs like this that empower people to enjoy nature in a way that they otherwise wouldn't be able to because of the resource constraints that may be there. Um, we do have a lot of different blue space available that we're not using to its full capacity. And this may be an opportunity to leverage that a little bit more. Uh, I would also note that COVID has forced a big change on the communities and we have more people who are staying within the community to work and or go to school. And we think there's a need to look at um, hotspot opportunities that get people out of the house. Um, which is good for their, not only their physical, but their mental wellbeing. And we want to explore some technology that allows that. Um, obviously we've got a couple of other things noted on the screen here, but um, I would close my thoughts on this slide by saying that our technology for reserving and paying for facility programs is somewhat cumbersome. And it's outdated. Um, we think it needs to be easy for citizens to identify the facilities that they can use and be able to reserve them with a real-time confirmation and payment in just a few clicks. So I, I would say from my point of view, I think it's time for Forest Lake to invest and embrace uh, some technology that, that would allow us to be able to offer, again, thinking about it from a transparency standpoint. What, what are the facilities that are available? What are the costs of those facilities? How do I do it? And how do I know I've got it? So. Um, you see some other things here as it relates to, um, you know, uh, the self-service, the digital signs, you know, right now, if you go to reserve a park, a paper sign is put up. And if it's in the middle of COVID and we don't have people to put up paper signs, you get into situations where who, I had the park, now I had the park. And so we need to be able to leverage technology from that standpoint. Um, and you know, we're also looking at some apps uh, that would engage children and maybe even adults in some physical activity and outside um, activity. So any questions?
Hi Terry. I tried Terry. That one is a little bit too young for me to move around that fast, but good idea for kids.
You can walk or run Karen.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So any questions on this one?
A quick question for Patrick. Patrick, I know that the new software that we're installing has um, some modules, for example, for licensing. Um, is it, is there a, is there a um, park component that we could utilize?
Um, no, no, there's not. Um, park software is usually pretty unique in what they do. There's very few software companies that do financial and, and parks at the same time. Mostly what you do is a park software, RecTrac comes to mind. Um, that will do all the registration, programming and field reservations and things like that. So it's pretty specialized. Uh, I think and not too many of the financial companies have that, if at any.
As a former state tax collector, uh, it's important to get the money when you ha- when, when they have it. So this would be something that again, that one stop shop allowing them to, actually I've heard complaints from community members as well, who have tried to reserve a facility and then they have to wait and then they can't pay and it's just not very efficient or streamlined.
Yep. Or quick customer service.
It is not. You are exactly.
Right. And then that's, that's going to be a main focus of what, when we've talked about this, uh, these field policies, a, a very important part of that is the reservation system, how we're going to do that, who's going to do it? We, we have an idea that we have a local vendor and not a local, the people who run the golf course offers some of this, at least for the short term, term, and we can explore long-term solutions as we go forward.
All right. So then we move on to the fourth initiative, which is new community recreation amenities and facilities. Um, I, I think the foundation has definitely been laid for a significant success in this area. I think streamlining the premier facility opportunities we have is the first step in that endeavor. Um, one of the things I will say that in this area, one of the things we talked about was acquiring the old Aqua building. Um, and looking at that uh, property as a year-round recreational club. Um, you know, if you think about the users of our city, this could be a potential solution for the senior center. And we could either repurpose or sell that building potentially. We have the North Star Trail that cuts through Forest Lake and across the lake. So we've got some snowmobiling opportunities. We also, I think, have some problems with the congestion at the main part of Lakeside Park. Um, it's, it's congested. We don't have the parking. So this would potentially allow us to diversify some of our lake traffic to different points of the lake. Um, it could be a great facility for generating some, um, some revenue as it relates to reservations um, that we don't really have available to us today. And again, could consolidate many of the organizations into one area and allow us to, um, like I said, potentially repurpose or sell some of our facilities. So again, one-stop-shop premier recreational destination could allow for some partnership with restaurant opportunity here where somebody wants to rent. A, a restaurant company would want to provide just some simple food, like you used to pull your boat up to the dock and jump off the boat and grab a burger, um, that kind of, kind of thing. So you know, at first I kind of thought, wow, that's a significant amount of money. But if again, you're looking at a 10-year plan and a community investment and a year-round recreational opportunity, we think that that may be uh, the perfect multi-use recreation center. So we talk about kayaks, boat rentals, fishing piers. Um, again, allowing us to spread out our involvement, our community activities around the lake and not just all centered right up front.
So Terry, the first time you um, mentioned this idea to me, I um, was, had to similar reaction to you of like, whoa, that's, that's significant. However, as I've thought about it further, um, both Minneapolis and St. Paul have very successful models. Um, Sea Salt at Minnehaha Fall is one that comes to mind. Um, and then also, um, the, what's the Como Pavilion? There's one on, on, in Como as well. Yeah. I, I'd be interested in learning more about those projects. Um, to the Como one might not be a great one. I, I think that may even COVID have been closed. And one may have struggled more, but Sea Salt, I think has been a, been there for many years and all has those recreational amenities that you're talking about. So, um, I'd be interested in learning more on how that public-private partnership works. Um, and uh, and it, it's a, I, I'm intrigued by the option, um, although it is a hefty lift, considering we just had a conversation about budget and um, funding and limitations in that area. But, um, I'm, I'm bold and have it on the, have it on the list.
It would allow us to acquire some optimal land that is, does not lose its value long-term, right? Right? It won't go away.
Did I just ask a question? Because a community person just told me that they took down the sign for sale and that they assumed that Aqua was sold. Is that not true?
I, I don't know. We.
I don't, I don't ask, as the city knew anything about that. I don't know. That's just a rumor that the sign came down and so maybe someone had bought it.
Well, one sign came down and then a different realer went up.
Okay.
And you think I live a block from there that I would be able to tell you if there's a sign there or not, but I can't. Um, now, now I'm curious and I'll drive down there tomorrow and find out.
Okay. Well, and the beauty of this is that we're not, we're not, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Terry. This Kelly, that's where we just moved from. Um, next door there, there is a new sign there. So it hasn't been sold yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, the beauty of this is, this is a, a strategic plan where we're going to talk about next steps and more work that we need to do. So obviously investigating a little bit more. I think Sea Salt is an excellent model. Um, uh, investigating a little bit more. We don't have to make decisions today. We just want to know if we're falling off the cliff or derailed here. So.
Another thing I would say too is, um, you know, this is a tenure plan. Properties are going to change hands over the course. And so while it might not be the one that's on the screen, um, there, while there's not a building like the Ac- former Aqua building, um, elsewhere on the lake, there are certainly other available and where the similar concept could work as well. So.
Yeah. And that's good. I was going to just come as well. And you're looking at the new community recreation amenities and facilities as a, a high-level category that we have, you know, we don't see a need for a community center or anything else like that. We have the YMCA. So the big vision, um, if you like tomorrow, um, Mara's point of it might not be that building, but just really the lakes are our biggest asset in the community and we have a really strong snowmobile population. Um, how can we have a facility that's accessible to the lake, to the community that can service year-round? And really maybe be a little hub for um, a year-round rec facility. Um, more of like the cabin feeling that you have in Forest Lake. Um, and so that was more of the, the vision and then it got a little more granular as we talked about that particular property, but trying to seek out a multi-use recreational facility for year-round purposes. So we can.
Jamie, Jamie, and another.
Jamie, another benefit of the Aqua Building. You know, you've got boat slips there. It's, it's been approved for 24 and they have dockage for 20 right now. So. Presently this year, they've been renting those slips out for $1,600 for the season. And so it's a nice, nice way to generate, you know. Twenty-six to $30,000 when this, when the restaurant was available or was working. They were renting those slips for $2,000 a season. So, so nice little, little income just to have it there on a, on a constant basis.
Long, as long as we're on the lake, there's two parks, North Shore there. One's got a sign, one's the magic hidden one there. I don't know even what street that is, if it's North Shore, part of North Shore Circle. Any ideas if we want to do anything more with them? The ones really just wooded, not used at all. The other one's got a sign.
Yeah, and that would go back to one of our first initiatives of really evaluating and looking at what makes sense there. You know, is it something as simple as a short path? Or is it something where it's a little bit more there? I think a piece of that is, is looking at what makes sense to go there that allows us to diversify and encompass. Some of the different demographics of the city, but I also think we need to take into consideration the people around those areas as well and the residents and. You know, parking and all kinds of things that need to be looked at. So. I would say that that is on our plan to take a look at them, but as far as what we would put there. It would be too early for us to make a commitment.
Thank you.
Terry, have you, has your team considered community gardens at all in some of those smaller? Those smaller parcels where there's, you know, pretty high-density neighborhood, you know, probably some little bit smaller lots. They may not have enough room of their own, you know, to do something like that. Some of those lake lots can be pretty small and, you know, kind of surrounding that area. Just, just a thought as a, as a way to really kind of make use maybe of a, something that's sort of tucked out of the way like that.
We can definitely write that on the list, I think, and consider that as we look at it. Yeah. All right, now that we've talked about our big, you'll notice there's no city campground on here, but can have everything, right? Okay, so I'll move on to, we're almost there, community events and programs. So for many people in Forest Lake, the community events may be their only exposure to what Forest Lake has to offer. And again, it's a great opportunity for us as a city. So in addition to the efforts like the farmer's market and arts in the park, we're committed to offering four signature events each year. And again, I think if COVID has taught us nothing, it's the importance of offering programs that allow for face-to-face integration and the opportunity to interact virtually. My personal opinion is I don't think it's either wise or healthy to wait for things to go back to normal because I'm not sure what normal is going to look like. In the future, and I think this is an opportunity to really make sure we're on our toes. And are offering events that allow us to pivot quickly and allow us to. Encompass our, again, citizens regardless of where they may be or, or what may be happening in their lives right now. I use. Eagle Brook is a perfect example of that. There's an organization who had both face-to-face and virtual, and I think they pivoted extremely well during COVID. We want that for us as well in this area. So, so we would want to explore whether or not it made sense to have a virtual option that could be successfully delivered to the community. You'll also notice that we're looking at it, developing a sponsorship program. We believe that there are individuals and businesses and local nonprofits who are very interested in investing in their community. And as such, we have to create a sponsorship program that again is transparent. It's easy for them to understand how they invest, invest in the city, what they result, receive as a result of their investment in the, the city. And if we proactively build a sponsorship program that's available to anyone, then the, it allows the city to have a seat at the table. As these organizations are going through their regular budgeting process. So we don't want to miss out on this opportunity. Again, depending upon what the organization or the business or the individual is, they budget at different times. But we want a program, again, that's available and gives us that seat at the table. Questions or comments on this? All right. So our last one is the staffing and the partnerships. Obviously, the current staffing situation of the Parks, Trails and Lakes is not going to be able to implement this 10-year vision as it is right now. And we recognize the addition of, of maintenance staff for the maintenance issues related to Parks, Trails and Lakes, and we appreciate all of that. But we think there's another step here that needs to happen. And really, if you think about it, to date, there's been no investment in additional resources to help maintain the programs or implement new programs or. Manage additional duties that have been added with what I would call the smart decision to realign the facilities. But we're, we're continuously in a, a mode of rob Peter to pay Paul. Not to mention that we have no sustainable succession plan in place here. And that to me is a, a significant risk on both fronts. So we are going to be recommending additional partnerships with organizations that have similar missions and goals. And we are also going to be recommending the addition of, of staffing to help support. Not only the 10-year vision, but the existing programs and activities that are on the plate. I would say that we came to you over a year ago, asking for a communications resource and that position has yet to be filled. And we want to be clear that if you don't invest in some of the additional resources, we will be sitting here a year from now, two years from now. 10 years from now advising you, we didn't get the things done because we failed to invest in the resources that allowed us to be able to get things done. And I know we talk about a lot of things that, that we need to do, but with one resource, there's only so much that can happen. And again. If you looked at this from a private organization or other. Situation, not having some type of sustainable succession plan in place. Or the ability to advance, to me is, is a huge organizational risk. Lastly, I'll just close by sharing our next steps. So we will provide specific priorities for each of the items we've discussed under each of the initiatives. Which will include more details such as, you know, locations that we're recommending, the strategies for that location and the additional costs. Will identify the budget needs that should be allocated into these initiatives. And one of the things that we wanted to talk about were some of those. What is your appetite as we look at considering alternative forms of funding? You know, we can look at things as simple as advertising and rental agreements, but we can look at things a little bit more complex like local sales tax options. We can look at endowment and legacy funds. So we're interested to know what your appetite is as it, as it relates to. The budget side because we recognize we need to come to the table with some solutions as well as asking you for funds. So. So we'd be interested in, in your appetite there. We would be asking you to incorporate these initiatives into the 10-year financial plan. And again, if Parks, Trails and Lakes were important enough for you to put into the strategic plan. It needs to be important enough for you to invest in a financial strategy that aligns with the strategic priority. So that we're enabled to be able to get some things done. And I will close by quoting Jason Steenblock. And I think, I think he says this incredibly well, and he says that. He's been on the Park Commission for a very long time and we've been playing catch-up, paying off loans such as Fenway Fields. And living off the park dedication fees. We need a financial investment. If we're going to be successful and, and we really do want to thank you again in advance for your commitment and guidance as we move forward. So this is where I will shut up. I'll stop sharing my screen and maybe we could, could talk a little bit about the potential. Options here.
So Terry and team, that was, that's incredibly well done. So thank you for the work and all of the leadership and thought that goes into that document. I know it's been a. A, a long work in progress and there's been lots of hours and lots of different points of community input into that document. So thank you and very, very well done. Also, I just, I recognize, I, I'm not sure if there's another area in the city and somebody tell me if I'm wrong, where we have such a gap between. Community expectation of what the community tells us they want and our current level of funding. I just, I, I think we've got a huge gap that we need to overcome. And I'm not sure how we do that. All, you know, and certainly how we kind of. Kind of step our way through that from where we are today to where we need to be in the future. And so I, you know, I think there's a number of moving targets, one being putting some financial numbers behind some of these goals. And some priorities and then us as a council and as a Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission. Getting creative on sources of funding. And it's probably going to be a little bit of an exercise in throwing spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks. And having to evaluate a number of different paths to try to get a long-term sustainable solution because we have. Let's, I think, just to recognize a pretty big gap between. What's in the plan and what our current sources of revenue are because Jason is absolutely right.
Thanks. You know, I honestly like that a, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a funding stream. You, you look at Aqua and, and you look at what we could do as a city there and. What possibly could happen? The funding stream could start there. It would be, it'd be an investment, but that's one stream that. Just for an example, we could have canoeing that started at Lakeside and they pick them up at, at Aqua, at that building. It could be weddings, it could be, it, it. It, it just opens up so much. And we have, we have room there to do that. There would be. Three, I mean, you could put three or four different, there's three or four different rooms in there which would. Which would help out immensely. So you could have three or four different things going on and along with possibly reorganizing the senior center to. Out that way and, and we could, we could grasp back our funds from there. Move them out there and 10 years down the road, that could be a, a great, a great. Stream for us, for the Parks, Lakes and Trails, along with the city.
I agree, Jason. I think one of the major problems we've always had with the city is parking, parking everywhere. We don't have enough. And I think that would be something we'd have to really consider when we're moving programs or weddings out there, that the parking is a situation that we'd have to overcome. I don't know if that land across the street. Can be used because North Shore, they've always said it's too dangerous to have them cross. But I don't, I'm all for looking at it. And, and I'm really all for trying to find more parking in the city for all of our events.
Well, I think, I think we have, I think we have adequate parking out there also.
The, the beauty of tonight's meeting isn't, we don't have to solve this problem tonight. We as a committee can take that back and, and do some more investigating and research.
Yep, no, yep, I agree.
I, I think, I think one of the things that I would like to see is, you know, and hopefully by the time. Spring or early summer hits, we, we are maybe a little, little beyond COVID or we can start gathering again to, at some level. But I would really like to try to assess the community's appetite for some of these investments as well. Because if you have, if you engage the community and the community looks at a plan and they say, wow, that would be really, really cool here. We would like to. You know, I mean, that sends a message to me as a council member that as I'm looking at our annual budget, you know, I'm, I'm going to want to integrate. Integrate that. Not that I don't want to integrate it, and I think we have to make a commitment to this. It's in our strategic plan. But you know, the cadence of that and how we do it and at what level, you know, to be able to, again, to assess, assess the community's appetite for those investments. An Aqua investment, for example, you know, a concept design and what does that look like? I, I love the, I love the idea of, of Aqua and, and what that could be. One of my concerns with it is access. Because you know, the beauty of Lakeside Park is you've got a lot of people around that area that can walk. You know, they can walk to Lakeside and enjoy the amenities there. So. I'm a little lukewarm on that, but I, I can, I can certainly ponder it a little bit, but I, you know, that would be one way. As well, you know, looking at a variety of potential funding streams, but. You know, really trying to assess the appetite of the community to make those investments would be helpful to me as well.
I think also Kathy, make, to piggyback off of that comment and that thought around a community's appetite. I do think it would be helpful to understand community's appetite as it relates to funding. So not only just the assets, but how do we fund? Because there are a number of different models, you know, just, you know, general fund is a model, user fees are a model. Or appetite around some sort of a sales tax or something that would be a special revenue source that we haven't considered within the city. I think just getting communities' understanding and appetite for those, but I think it's rather than just talking, nobody likes taxes and nobody likes fees. So rather than having it be that conversation, I think it has to be a twofold conversation, assets as well. Of, you know, you're having both sides of the conversation at once and getting some appetite. But also provides a lot of us with some information that keeps these plans a little bit future-proof because at that point the community is engaged. And it's not just one council and one Parks, Lakes and Trails. Vision that might swing as these, as we, you know, through our, through our lives come on and off these boards. But it's really something that's grounded in some solid, solid, community has told us. That help hopefully provides some longer-term sustainability, longer than each of us being in the seats, that it's more of a, the community is invested in the community as spoken.
Yeah, and I'll just mention something here too. You know, this, and maybe you've heard me say this before, but Elk River, Minnesota. Went under, went through a similar process. And if you haven't seen the Active Elk River Plan, I encourage you to look at it. I'm happy to send that link out. But they went through a whole process similar to this to identify what the recreation needs were in the community. A lot of community input sessions, which we've done. And then they really developed the plan. So. They put together a website, a lot of detailed information about it, and they, they actually did do the sales tax approach in the community. They did a study first to understand what percentage of residents are coming in and out of Elk River to kind of gauge the impact for local residents. So they were very successful in developing this, this elk, active Elk River Plan. And I think as the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission, as we move forward. You know, kind of following a similar model of let's pick, here's a specific trail development that we're going to focus on. Here are the one or two big projects and kind of put together a package, a more firm, final presentation to council with. Financial dollars attached to that and say, if we had to pick our, you know, in the 10 years, here's our top five things and package it together from the information tonight. Then we know what, what the total financial impact would be. And then to Mayor Bain's point, you know, there's the, the general fund, there's a trail and trail development fee. We don't have currently, but some communities put that in. Looking at the sales tax and other, other opportunities. So taking the next step, I think, as Terry mentioned, is really packaging this together in a more final. Version for city council, attach some dollars to it, but Elk River does provide a really good example for what they just did with their community. And have done it very well, so.
I understand the path for some sort of a, like a, a special revenue tax or like a sales tax, that, that path does require voter referendum. Is that right?
Correct.
So it, you know, we, we would need clearly community support to head. But even just to gauge appetite, I think would be incredibly helpful. Because I think what we may, we may find some very, some very clear direction of what is palatable and what isn't. And that as a decision maker, that would just be incredibly helpful to know as we're kind of contemplating different options.
I think one of the keys for us is to be able to. Again, I can't stress it enough. There are not enough resources in this area. And so as you think about even the things that you're talking about. And so as you think about even the things that you're talking about right now and the capacity to take that on with one resource, again, we're going to be robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I think that, the, the key is trying to help keep everybody motivated and engaged and also helping to educate people that things may or may not be getting done that may be of a passion of them or a priority. Again, I'll look at the partnerships as we take on these new facilities. I don't know what the expectations are, but if we're going to balance all this with one resource, we need to set very clear expectations that it's going to take some time or these are going to be the priorities so that we don't, so that we're accept successful with these transitions because expectations are at a, a realistic point. And so that we can stay motivated, that we see some progress and we're able to, to get some work done here. So I don't know how you all want to fund it in the interim, but I just want to throw that out there that he, the bar has to be set pretty low if we're not going to invest in positions. And again, I, I, and Patrick and I have already had this conversation on the last meeting, but resources, where are we at with this communications research? I, you don't have to answer that because I already know the answer, but rhetorically speaking, where are we at with that position and why isn't it on board yet? And what are we going to do to take on? We keep piling, but not adding resources. So I don't know how to express it anymore that I, than I can. But if you want to keep us motivated and you want to keep a reasonable expectation, you're going to need to do something at least in the interim from a funding standpoint here.
I, I think it's. Nope, go ahead, Paul.
You know, in our strategic plan that there we did, uh, the parks is, um, the longest drawn out process uh, before we really have a solid plan. Um, and it, if I'm kind of getting the impression here that everybody here wants to go now um, and not have the whole plan or a more solid plan put together, or am I misreading something tonight?
You're, I would say from my point of view, I clearly I know that it's going to take an investment in planning and work to get that plan going. But we're also trying to manage the day-to-day operations and the additional work that is coming onto the plate. You know, again, we're combining senior center, we're throwing in FLA. We're, we've got policies and procedures that need to be updated. We've got other community organizations that want to be engaged and participate. We have activities that need to occur. So we need to do the day-to-day with also trying to create a long-term strategic plan. And you can only get so far on either one of them, right? When you, when you, when you haven't made the initial investment in, in resources. So I guess I'm trying to just be realistic that our plan might be outdated by the time we get our plan done. In that, you know, what, what happens day-to-day that needs to be done and what amount of time can we dedicate to building this long-term strategy?
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we've, uh, we've got kind of the perfect storm, right? Even if you think about the time when we did the, um, the strategic plan, we didn't know at that point, A, we didn't know COVID was going to hit. But we also didn't know at that point, we were going to have this trifecta of golf course and senior center and, you know, our field a- agreements, those relationships have all subs- you know, and our, our, um, work has substantially changed. And so Terry, you're, you're, you're spot on. Let's be realistic of what is being asked and making sure that we're resourcing that appropriately. And I mean, even in just the last 12 months, and we started a strategic plan, you know, prior to that. Um, even in the last 12 months, that has transformed tremendously. And then we pandemic on top of it. So, um, the point is, the point is certainly well taken.
And these are good decisions. I mean, I think what we're doing with the facilities aligns with what the rest of the world is doing with facilities and how they are managed normally. So I'm not saying that they're not good decisions. They're, they're good decisions and they make sense. But we just, we have to, to, to long-term look at how we fund those and what we can get done. I'll get off my soapbox now.
Yeah, I, I don't just, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I, 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 and I think, I think we, I think we do have that front and center. I'm just not quite sure what the timing is on all of that. I know we have that position in the budget. Um, we have another support position in the budget to kind of help with fields and maybe provide some support. Um, setting up events and those sorts of things, um, for Jamie and the budget. Um, but I'm wondering if, uh, there isn't an opportunity for some, you know, we, you, you talk about technology being a priority. Is there an opportunity for a kind of a one-time investment in some software or something like that? That would, you know, um, especially as we're moving toward potentially doing all of the field scheduling and other, that'll be another thing on, on Jamie's plate. Could we, could we take a look at what, what, you know, an investment in scheduling software or some park and rec management software? Um, that may.
Who takes a look at that and who gets it implemented?
Yeah.
Is it Patrick?
Yeah, well, let's, let's go back here. So a part of what we've done with the golf course and a part of what we want to do with the fields is to organize it and get it to a place where we don't have to worry about it so much and we don't have to spend a lot of time. And it's actually a way to free Jamie's time for, from the, the confusion and the disorganization that these have been in the past. Um, I think I mentioned earlier that, uh, we're going to have at least a temporary idea or fix of how we're going to using the scheduling software by people who run the golf course have scheduling software. That's our best and our fastest way to implement something like that without saying Jamie here, implement a new piece of software, which is, you know, you have to take year, a year to, you know, evaluate, put your needs together and, and go through a software purchase. So I think that is a positive step towards taking some of that burden off if we can get it organized and, and structured correctly there. Uh, that Jamie won't have to worry about it day after day after day after day. Um, I will agree that resources are, are stretched and need to be addressed, but um, I have the same, uh, same comments from the police department, fire department and all of those. So we have to do, have to prioritize. And I'm not saying parks isn't a priority. If it was me, I'm, I'm more of a park guy than you, than you really know. Um, but we have to judge all of those within the contents of the rest of the, uh, the operation. And that's, you know, that's expensive. And if I had my way, you know, I, I can add 35 positions in the next 10 years and cost the city another $4 million. But you know, that's not going to happen because, but that's somewhat close to what the needs are.
Well, and that's clearly as a citizen of Forest Lake, what we don't want to have happen either, but there has to be some type of strategic balancing act here as it relates to staffing, right? If we only had one police officer or one maintenance person or one firefighter or one, I, I mean, there's got to be some longer-term strategy here, or we just need to, again, set the expectations. You're not going to get a lot or this is how long it's going to take or, and again, being able to make sure people clearly understand what's going to happen and then making sure that we keep people engaged.
And I agree. And I think that's one of the reasons why we identified a part maintenance worker this year to, to add that to the, to the rotation so that we can better maintain the fields and watch over those uh, and keep them up where they should be. And that was a, a need in the field, but now we have to need, address the need here inside the building, you know, making that administrative part of it a little bit easier.
Patrick, are we, are we able to do a sales tax study? I, I mean, I'm, I'm just out of curiosity. I, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about other areas of, of the city that need a sustainable source of funding. And, you know, so if you did, uh, I don't know, I'm just going to throw a number out there arbitrarily, uh, you know, did a hat, did a
Quarter percent.
One, one half a percent and you did a quarter to parks and a quarter to, you know, roads. You know, um, I, I don't know. Can we just, can we take a look at it?
We should be able to get enough information about current sales tax from the state. I, I believe they, they have that obviously, and they could tell us how much the commercial industry takes in and things like that. And then we could do a quick, some, some mathematics and some analysis to, to figure out what a quarter percent, half percent may generate, forgetting about the process that you have to go, the amazing long process you have to go. But we can identify what the impact of that is. And, you know, I think I've said this to a few of the park board members is the beauty of a sales tax here is that we've got a huge commercial core out by the expressway. And we've got a lot of people come from out of Forest Lake to shop there. And so what you're really doing is you're having non-residents and we could try, I don't know if there's data about how many are non-residents versus residents, but you'd have a lot of non-residents paying some things for your parks and trails and roads or whatever you decide the, the program's going to be. But we'll look into it. We'll look and see how we can do that.
Okay.
I, I think in the, you know, near term around just sustainability and timing, I think, um, you know, I'd look to Patrick and I know we're, you know, council's getting ready to do a kind of deep into fourth quarter review of 2020 budget. And as we're planning for finalization for 2021, it'd be helpful just to recognize that there's been some substantial changes in overall needs in the positions and of, you know, make some recommendations on what we should do. Um, you know, i- i- in the near term to make sure that we are, you know, adequate, you know, adequately resourced. I, I, I think we're, we're, we've got a, we, we've added a lot to the plate this year. And so just make sure that we're meeting those, meeting those needs and, um, and also making some forward progress or we need to make some forward progress and um, come back with some recommendations.
So I, you know what? I, this just popped into my head. I don't know if it's going to fly or not, but it's, it's an idea. Um, so we do our, we, we do our land acquisition with, with the builder and then we get $3,500. Is there any way that we could do when houses, when, once, when houses sell, just normal houses, old houses? Would there be a way that we could add in to into the, into that to say a hundred dollars would go towards parks, lakes and trails or, uh, something that.
Tax?
Yeah, usually that's, that's often called a real estate transfer tax. Um, we could call it a fee, whatever you want to call it. I have to see if we can even legally do that. I, um, that's one that I've not heard of in the state. At least this state, Illinois is pretty famous for doing that, but, uh, I'm not sure. I'll, I'll ask the legality of that. That's, I'm not familiar enough to, to know that that's a thing or something we can do. Basically what you're doing is extending the impact fee not only to new buildings, but to buildings when sold.
Because we are technically, we are, like you say, in 20 to 30 years, we're, we're going to be running out of, out of land to put things up. So we're going to have to kind of rejuvenate our, our funding stream.
Cool. Well, you, yeah, and that's why you should start now because it's going to take you 20, 30 years to probably get where you need to get to. Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's finite for me. I, you know, to me, it makes more sense to be looking at something, you know, that could be sustained for the long term, you know, like a small tax or something like that. Um, you know, and, and restricted and dedicated and, um, I don't know. I just like.
We just have to balance that with.
One thing that they do on, on, on real estate transactions and the, the number of years ago, the, the DNR did, they charged $5 for a conservation fee. And so every transaction, $5 goes to the DNR. Well, you, you, you look at that $5 and think, well, that's not a big deal. Uh, but then you look at, if you take, um, Remax, Cola Bank or any diner, Realty, and you add the other transactions, they have about 90,000 transactions. So you take those 90,000 times $5 and I have a r- a fairly substantial amount of money. Um, a number of years back, state decided they wanted to, um, locate all the wells. And so in every transaction, whether you're on city water, sewer or well and septic, there's a $50 charge, what they call a, a, a a well, well search fee. And so, you know, again, it, it's been going on for a long time. I'm sure they found all the wells, but it's now just kind of a, um, an income flow for, for the state. Now, and I don't, but I don't, I don't know what the, the ramifications are, how you would put, you know, like say a $25, a hundred dollar fee for, for parks on something like that. But the, the state seems to be able to do that pretty easily.
Well, and, and not to be cavalier, but that's because the state can pass laws and do things that they need to do. And, and have, and have restrictive, you know, the local mu- have the municipalities kind of boxed in and making sure that they, you know, unless you get special legislation, can't do a lot of other things besides property tax and local fees. So, but we'll look into all of options as far as a local transfer fee or, or assessment against, you know, you know, we'll see what we can do. I mean, you can also have a special assessment that, but that's, no, there's lots of ways of different revenues we can look at, but we'll take a look.
Yeah. And with, and with that being said too, you know, I think, uh, I took a lot of notes here of council feedback for next steps as we navigate through this. Um, it sounds like continuing to firm up a plan and, and put some price tags to that plan. Um, and alongside that can start looking at and exploring some of those rev- potential revenue opportunities so that we can gauge, um, what those are and what the community might feel about some of those if it would be some form of, um, sales tax in the community. So I think those are good next steps. Um, I just wanted to thank all the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commissioner members. Um, you are all, you know, very appreciated. Um, they've, you have a very dedicated group here. So keeping them engaged and motivated. Um, they've came, come up with some really great vision ideas. So, um, we'll continue to guide through that. And then thank you to, to council for listening tonight. Um, I know it got a little long, but you only get us in a joint workshop once in a great while. So hopefully it was informative, kind of got you up to speed. So you know where we're going, where we've been, where we're going, um, what we're working on. Um, at any time, um, outside of this meeting, if you have any questions or additional thoughts that pop into your head, certainly feel free to send them my way and I'll share with the commission. Um, but you know, if there's no other comments or feedback tonight, we certainly could. I think we've got a lot of good next steps that I can take and, and continue working with. So.
Any other, any other wrap-up comments or questions before we adjourn this evening?
Thanks.
Want to thank Terry for doing a great job of verbalizing what we're all about.
And I might be, I would like to, uh, just thank everyone on the park board for all the work they do. It's, sometimes it, it doesn't get noticed as, as much as some of the other stuff, but it's, it's really, really important moving forward. Um, you know, I cut my teeth on the park board in the old town. So I first got, uh, started with community involvement. So I've been on this route for funding for a long time. So I completely empathize with that. Um, but I do think that the council is very interested in, in upgrading our parks and, and doing a fair amount of work with them moving forward. Once we have a solid plan. Just thank you for everything you guys do.
Very well said, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. I echo those comments and also Jamie and Patrick. Thank you for the day of all of, all of what you do and, uh, we, especially Jamie, we recognize you are a one-person show. So much, much appreciated. All right. Well, thank you, everybody for your attention this evening. I, not seeing any other comments coming forward, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And we will have to do a roll call vote for adjournment. So stay tuned for that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move. Second.
I hear a motion and a second. And Karen, could we do a roll call for adjournment?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Husnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramseth?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Guyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Steen Black?
Aye.
Commissioner Moorehead?
Aye.
Chair Steen Black?
Aye.
And finally Mayor Bain. Aye, thank you everybody, we are adjourned, have a good evening.
Thank you, bye.